Oh, yeah, she's not, she's not a happy campus. We ready?
We bet. I'll call this meeting in order. First up is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, moving on. We'll have roll call, please.
Fish, Housman, Jones, Parsons, Wakefield, Mayor Beasley.
Here. We have a quorum, so we will proceed with approval of tonight's agenda.
Second.
Motion from Housman, second from Parsons to approve tonight's agenda. As before us, questions or discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item four, we have the minutes of a May 3 briefing, a May 7 regular council meeting, and a May 14 special meeting. I will entertain a motion in a second for those. Motion from Wakefield, second from Fish to approve the minutes of those three meetings. Questions or discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item five is approval of claims for May 21st. Motion from Housman, second Parsons to approve the claims for May 21st. Questions or discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item six, we have two things on the consent calendar, a plat of lots 3 and 5, Block 1, and lots 16 and 17, Block 2, Aspen Harbor addition, and a plat of Lot 1A, Block 1, Heartland Business Park addition. I will entertain a motion in a second for that. A motion from Wakefield, second from Parsons to approve the consent counter. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. This takes us into visitors and timed items, and our first item up is a public hearing to consider an on-sale liquor license to El Tapatio Mexican Restaurant on 16 North Split Rock Boulevard. Please. I don't know if, is it ready to go? There you go.
Okay. I would like to thank everybody here for working with us and lowering and making this happen to approve the, basically apply for the liquor license. I was here on the 17th with the conditional use, and today I'm here again to petition for the liquor license.
And we thank you for doing it. So it's because, this is why I petitioned to get it lowered, is because of, you know, your business and how well it's doing, but also for future businesses that come.
Yes.
So thank you, and appreciate you.
Yeah, that kind of gave us the flexibility for the budget that we came up with, and the business is doing good. It'll be doing better once we have the liquor license. So I do have a menu if anybody's interested in taking a look at it.
Yeah, multiple times.
Very good.
Yes, yes.
So I'm making a motion to approve the liquor license.
You had submitted that application, and there were four things it asked you to provide, so I just wanted to verify if you didn't provide an answer. Is that because there is none, if you want me to?
On what item are we, did I not?
Well, for example, it wanted a list of all lawsuits or criminal charges, and nothing was listed.
Oh, yeah, there is no criminal charges.
And no lawsuits?
No, not at all. I'm sorry.
No, I just wanted to verify because it didn't say none, so I just wanted to make sure that that was your answer.
That was just my mistake for not marking none, but...
Yeah, not a mistake. Just wanted to make sure affirmatively that we're not saying.
Yes, there is no criminal charges or record on my...
All right, I'm making a motion to approve liquor license for El Tapatio.
A motion from Housman, second from Fish to approve the liquor license, on-sale liquor license. Questions or discussion? If not...
Just want to add Maria.
Maria?
Maria. And I think she knows, because I've talked to her too, but for Maria and Sassy Nails, what will happen now is I'll send it off, the application off to the state. The state will get approval, and then I'll get the license back from the state, so you won't be able to do liquor or the wine, the next one. Sassy Nails won't be able to sell until you actually get that license back.
Yes.
So, just to clarify with you two.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that being said, I have a motion, second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Okay, and item B is to consider an on/off sale wine license at Sassy Nails and Spa at 511 North Split Rock Boulevard.
Well, hello, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Steve Trong, representing Sassy Nails and Spa. I'm coming here a second times today. I went last time, May 17. We requesting for a liquor license, or I don't know what to call it, because it's just serving complimentary wine and champagne, so I don't know if it determines a liquor license, but I just need that to serve my clients for a better relaxations after, you know, hard-working days, and they just want to come relax, and their feet done, and massage. That's the whole thing point. It's all free. There's no selling, stuff like that, and it's not heavy liquor. It's just very simple lighted champagne and wine.
And I don't know what the council wanted to do, but it's, the law has changed, so it can be on/off sale, but if you want to put limitations on it, so it's just on sale, so they can only sell there, and people can't take the alcohol out. I don't know that that's your intent, to have people be able to come in and purchase and leave with it?
Well, my whole point, my whole point is serving what we have at the Sassy. We, we don't allow to sell, or people, I don't know, they can bring in like some kind of like bridal party or stuff like that, you know, but besides that, we don't sell nothing at all. We just, I don't know the point that they, I think, they absolutely cannot carry out from the door, you know, from my door, no. But sometimes they had parties and bring the wine or liquor in, and in that case, I'm requesting that too. If, you know, they had the party or like bridal party, they bring it in into our door, but as long as they cannot bring anything from us out to my door.
So if you want that limitation, you have the ability to do it, and if you don't want to put that limitation, you don't have to. So I'm just telling you, the law has changed, so that's, that's your option in terms of making motions. If you don't want them to purchase and leave with it, you could say it's just for purchase there only, and you can't leave.
And that's through a motion, or is there any other?
Yeah, I mean, whatever motion is going to be, I just wanted to let you know, you have the ability now under the new laws to put that limitation on there, because it used to be you could just get an on-sale only, but now it's on/off, and you can limit the on/off to just on if you want.
Okay.
So you got to just be specific with your motion of what you want.
All right, so I'll make a motion to approve, but not, you can't carry it out.
Just on sale.
So on sale then. There you go. Yeah, so I'll make a motion to just do the on-sale wine license.
I have a motion from Housman, second from Wakefield to approve an on-sale wine license to Sassy Nails and Spa. No off-sale. Okay, and you're all right with that, sir?
Yes, yes, sir. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay. With that being said, is there any other questions or discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Now, we have a public hearing to consider an application for retail on/off sale malt beverages at Blaine's, Casey's, Expressway, Oak Ridge Nursery, Pizza Ranch, The Gas Stop, Dollar General.
Okay, so this is one of those that where the law changed, where they no longer have, they only have one license now for malt beverage, and that's retail on/off sale malt beverage. So these are actually new applications. They had to apply for a new one. So we can set some conditions on these. Mainly, it would have been Blaine's, Casey's, Expressway, and Dollar General that used to have an off-sale license, and now they'll be considered an on/off sale. So, and then I believe Expressway is here possibly to speak on the behalf of Expressway.
Okay, so again, my question on, that I had on this on Thursday. So if we approve this license as an on/off sale, Dollar General or any of these others could set up a little bar in the back and start serving.
They can't?
Can't.
According, our current ordinances require them to get a conditional use permit on sale. So this would just be for off-sale activities only. If they did want to change it in the future, they certainly could with a conditional use process.
Okay, so even if we approve it as an on/off sale, they still have to come before us to get a conditional use to sell it on their premise for, for consumption on their premise?
Yes.
Right, but I guess to me, it wouldn't make more sense to do on/off sale and approve the on-sale and then go to the conditional use. So I think what makes more sense is to approve it if you want to do the off-sale, then have them apply for the conditional use and get an on/off sale. Does that make sense?
That was my, what I was trying to get at.
Okay, so previously, it was just off-sale.
Yes.
Right?
But the state changed the rules.
The state changed the rules.
Not for all, for some, because some have an on/off sale.
Yep. Sir, you need, you want to come up? You've been very patient. State your name, please.
Dan Ortman. I'm the Director of Retail Operations for Staples Enterprises, which owns the Expressway store here in town. We had a violation of selling alcohol to a minor back in October, and I just wanted to get in front of you and just explain our process and where we stand at it. Obviously, every time we hire an employee, they go through a probationary period with a training period. Each one of our employees is required to go to a ready online training. It's an hour and 10-minute process of an online training for responsible sale of age-sensitive products, alcohol, tobacco, et cetera. Every one of our employees are required to go through that, and they do do that, and they get certified off of that, and then we have just an ongoing updated program to that. This, this instance, we have a zero tolerance. We want to be responsible retailers when it comes to age-sensitive product. So in this case, the employee that did it admitted to doing it. She was terminated, and we, we went on. After that happened, well, then we take that establishment, and every one of our employees go through the whole training process all over again, and, and it's just a continuing education thing. We are very supportive of the We Card program. We, we put all our employees through that training as well. And then just for future, we are in the process of every one of our stations is getting updated, and so with the new POS, it'll be installed within the next two months. It'll be automatic scan of the driver's license in order to ring it up.
Very good.
Yep.
Very good. Thank you very much. Thank you. Yeah, thank you for coming before us.
So just for ease of use, can we break this up into the groups of which were off-sale first? We'll do a motion on that, and then the others that were on-off sale, do that as a second motion. Can you help us through that, please?
Yep. So the first motion, you could, you could say that Blaine's, Casey's, Expressway, and Dollar General would be off-sale only.
I'll go ahead and make a motion that Blaine's, Casey's, Expressway, and Dollar General would stay as an off-sale only license.
All right, I have a motion from Wakefield, second from Housman, that four of these, was that four or five?
That was four.
Four of these would remain as an off-sale. If they want to change to an on-sale, they need to come before us. Questions or discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Not when we, sorry. Okay, so now I'm going to make the motion to, for Oak Ridge, Pizza Ranch, and The Gas Stop. I'm going to make the motion for Oak Ridge, Pizza Ranch, and The Gas Stop to be on/off, right?
A motion from Housman, second by Fish, to approve the on/off sale for, was there three of them?
Yes.
Those, the remaining three to remain on/off sale. Questions or discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now, our second one is we have a public hearing to consider renewal applications of retail on/off sale on, basically quite a list.
Yes, and it would actually be that list, except Marcos Pizza is not renewing. El Tapatio will not need one anymore since you approved the liquor license, and The Boutique was not returned. So I would have you make a motion to approve those, except Marcos, El Tapatio, and Boutique.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve Happy Jack's, Joker's, Split Rock City Stores, CCNF Retail, and Hidden Valley Golf Course. Those ones.
For on/off.
For on/off sale, sorry. On/off.
A motion from Housman, second, Parsons to approve the aforementioned ones with the elimination of Marcos, El Tapatio, and The Boutique. Questions or discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item E, we have a request. Well, we are, must be alcohol this today, because...
There is alcohol going on.
Request to have a class reunion from 6:00 to 9:00 down at McCarty Park, and can't have a class reunion, obviously, without alcohol. Yeah. How are you going to? Yeah, for a better word, police it?
Well, it'll just be our classmates and young children, because it's, it's the family time from 6:00 to 9:00. We're having a barbecue, and, you know, they're going to want to have a beer with their barbecue, and I don't want to break the law. So this basically just gets us covered for that. We do have an event after that kids go away, and it's an adult event out of town. So we will only be there till 8:30.
And you're not charging for it?
No.
For it, you're just?
No, it's a BYOB. They'll just bring their own if they're interested in bringing some, so.
Chief, you're in the back. You have any problem with this?
Give her the stink eye.
Sorry, I didn't mean to wake you up.
I'll be there. I'm very responsible, and I don't know if Christina's coming, but she's in class of 98 as well, so between the two of us, I think we can manage.
Okay. All right, thanks, Chief.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion from Housman, second, by Parsons to approve the request for alcohol in McCarty Park on June 29 from 6:00 to 9:00. Questions or discussion? With that being said, all in favor signify by saying aye. If not, signify by saying nay. All right. And then we have a presentation from the Brandon Development Foundation and the Brandon Area Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to represent the Development Foundation tonight and just briefly go through what we did. I apologize that we hadn't gotten here before. Time just got away from us, but this was done latter part of, I think, '16, that the Development Foundation Chamber got together. You can see there on page 46 what our focus question was for the strategic plan that both organizations had. Prior to that, our Development Foundation had not ever held a strategic plan. I can't speak for the chamber. If you had, okay. We had not, but we thought it was good that both groups get together. So just briefly, when we look on page 47, our moderator asked the group to think into the future what we thought 2026 might look like. We just rattled off a list of bullet points there. Not going to go through each one, but take your time after this to read through that. I think they were all good discussions that we had. The next page, the moderator asked us to look at accomplishments, setbacks over the past, present, strengths and weaknesses, and future risks or opportunities. And again, the group just went through, we all agreed on these certain bullet points, and that's what we basically came up with. So again, read through this. Can ask questions later. We can take a few tonight, but I didn't want to spend a whole lot of time on this just showing you what we did. Page 49, you can see that vision question, what we wanted to see in the next three to five years. That's what the group all agreed on. And then page 50, what we basically learned from the strategic plan is that we did not want both organizations to merge. We wanted to keep collaborating. You can see the bullet points there that we went through. Third one from the bottom, there was quite a bit of discussion over a part-time position for economic development, because again, at this planning session, we talked about some of us on the Development Foundation getting older and going to retire and won't be around forever, so we wanted to make sure that that was talked about. And page 51, what came out of this planning session is with Kim's help, the Development Foundation went ahead and developed a logo tagline. We created a brochure, because in 2017, we sent out some brochures to other members who we had never reached out to before. So we wanted to use this as an introduction. We updated bylaws. We expanded our board to include ex officio members, to include an elected Brandon city official, a rep from the school district, and a rep from the Chamber of Commerce. And then we did a little forward thinking there to take into account when Dennis decides to retire and some succession planning that we had to do. If any of you were at the Chamber Annual Dinner, the slide 52, we just went through what little land we have available in the Corson Industrial Park. Not much there. Just showing you what we have for leases and buildings, who we have it listed with. Price is there on slide 53 and 54. And then the next slide is what we have available in our Brandon Industrial Park, and what's left there is all spoken for with first right of refusal, so we're about done on that park. And then the slide 56 is what the proposed Robang Industrial Park will look like, and that is soon to start under construction to develop the first, I think it's going to be 20 acres to the south, which will include some rail access going north past that detention pond. So if all goes well and the weather holds, we should have all of that work done by later this fall, September, October-ish. So that, just real briefly, is what's going on with the Development Foundation. If anybody has questions for me, I can answer those. If not, I'll turn it over to Kim.
Well, we figured while we're doing the presentation together, we might as well throw in our little chamber presentation that we like to come and do for you once a year. Clearly, you know, we are an organization for the business community, but there are a lot of things that overlap and that really benefit the city, and those are kind of the chamber highlights I wanted to cover a little bit here. Clearly, our new location, we've been there a year now, which is good, and we're loving it, and it's working out well for us. A few things that we do that help the Brandon community. We have been doing, I've got my one, I brought one bag. So for the past 10 years, we've been doing hand-delivered new resident welcome bags. So we're still doing it. It's about 30 to 35 bags a month. That is the bag. Our businesses put in trinkets. We also have a big coupon booklet in there, as well as, I'm trying to think, the visitor guide, which is now going to switch over to our inside Brandon, because that makes more sense for our residents, and then voter registration form, information on the city bus, and just some other great stuff in there to hopefully welcome our folks and make them feel good about moving here. Of course, we have our Buy Brandon campaign, which has been going on for many years, and we continue to work on that. We have a very robust website, which we're actually working on doing another upgrade here, so within the next 60 days, you'll see it looking even sharper. It's a great place to find information on our businesses, as well as the most comprehensive events calendar in town, because we have the schools' information, our businesses, our churches, all of those are on there. So brandonvalleychamber.com, if you've not been there, you should check it out. And something new this year that we're doing is visitor welcome bags. So we actually have 10,000 bags, and we are printing 10,000 of those visitor coupon sheets. They are actually at print as we speak, because our first event is the big baseball tournament that's going on this coming weekend, and we have to fill, it sounds like, 700 bags. So that 10,000 seems like a lot, but I think it's going to go by pretty quickly. But it's a little bag with some good coupons to our local places. We're going to do the visitor guide as long as we can, because we don't even have 10,000 of those to fill in the bags. But we think it's just a great thing to welcome visitors into town, and the bag actually gives the organization, baseball, softball, whoever has them, if they have stuff that they want to distribute to, this is a way for them, an easy way for them to have a bag and stuff to put it in. So that's something new that we're doing. The next deal, of course, we're doing Shop Small Saturday. That has been, become the biggest shopping day in Brandon, which we're really proud of, and we're going to continue doing, and it seems that people really like the, I guess I call it a bingo card. It's really not, but, so that you can go around, get stickers, and return it in to win some gift cards from around town. So we will continue doing that. The only other thing I've got, I hope you all enjoyed your Inside Brandon magazine that you received last week. Great, great partnership between us and the city, something we'll plan on continuing to do, and hopefully it'll just grow in size, and we'll get more information in there, and it'll be the thing that people look for in their mailboxes. We'll be doing spring/summer, and then a fall/winter, which that next issue should come out in August, and then the next year's spring/summer, hopefully we'll get it done by March timeframe, so it's not this late next time. But does anyone have any questions for me? That's it.
The Inside Brandon, a ton of great feedback.
Good.
Nailed it out of the park. It's, you did great, so thank you for all the efforts there and pulling together all the information. That, there was almost too much, but somehow you fit it all in, so great, great.
Well, Isley did a good job over at Performance Press. She did the design, so making ordinances look pretty. And something you might want to read? That was kind of the goal there. So Kim, how many members do we have now in the chamber, roughly? Our goal by the end of the year is 300. We are at probably 275. We've kind of held steady for the last few years.
Very good.
It's not yet. I do have the PDF version of it. That's my goal, is to get it on the website, but that, since we're going through a redo of our website, I don't know if it's going to make it on there, but I'm going to try to figure out some way to get it so that we have it. And maybe, maybe we just need to work with the city and get it on the city's website. We could do that, too. Cool.
Thanks.
Thanks, Kim. I would just add too that the Development Foundation, we're now meeting in the Chamber Boardroom every month, and then Kim has links on the Chamber website for stuff that we're doing, so there's that cooperation. And then I think Kim and I have talked about, we're going to do the same presentation sometime to the school board.
Oh, very good.
We'll keep everybody up to date on that, so.
Very good.
Thanks, Kim.
Any other visitors or timed items? Okay, well, let's move on to old business. Item A, ordinance 563, water regulation use in chapter 14-3, water and sewer service in general.
Christina, we had talked a little bit about just yards and grass. Was that updated on? Resolution, not this. Perfect.
I'll make a motion to approve reading of second, or second reading of ordinance 563.
Second.
A motion from Housman, second by Parsons, to approve ordinance number 563, which amends chapter 14-2 and 14-3. which amends chapter fourteen dash two and fourteen dash three. Questions or discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Item eight B, ordinance five six five, a amending chapter six dash three, providing definition, criteria, and permitting of a farmer's market in central and general business districts and light and heavy industrial zoning districts.
I'll make a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance five sixty-five.
I'll second.
A motion from Hausmann, second, Wakefield, to approve the second reading of ordinance five sixty-five, chapters six dash three, for farmer's markets. Questions or discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Moving on, item nine A, we have some summer help on the golf course.
Just forgot to get on our list for last month, so Zane couldn't be here tonight, so he just asked me to mention that, and...
And I assume, before she starts, she, she has gone through the training.
I would assume so, too, but I'll make sure Zane's aware of that.
Okay.
And then also, Tim has a comment to make.
Okay, can we take care of this first?
Yep, sorry.
All right, so we have a beverage cart person, Amber Christian, and she's starting at six fifteen an hour, and we will check to make sure that she's had her training before she starts. I will entertain a motion in a second to approve.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion from Parsons, second from Hausmann, to approve Amber Christian on the beverage cart, questions or discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now you may proceed, sir.
Did a little brainstorming with Zane, and he had done some brainstorming with Chuck as well, trying to think of different out-of-the-box ideas on how to increase green fees, get more people enjoying our beautiful golf course, and kind of came to me one evening to basically try to use the captive audience we have, we've been doing very well on having outings out at the golf course, and I asked Zane if we had ever thought of trying to promote with a coupon or something like that to the people that had come to the outings, and it actually was something that we may have tried maybe long ago, but something that would be good opportunity for a fresh start, and Zane is going to come up with what the program is, but basically we'll have a business card or some kind of coupon that everyone that comes to an outing will, will get, and then hopefully we can see some of those people that are from out of town, or maybe just in Sioux Falls, that have come to an outing that maybe haven't been to our golf course before, but a way to entice them to come enjoy Brandon again, and it sounded like Zane was very excited about it, and I think Chuck had an opportunity to talk to him a little bit as well, so something new, something to try.
So what, would that coupon, it'd be like a ten percent off or pay for nine, play eighteen type thing?
Two for one.
Two for one, sounds like good ideas.
Yeah, I, I told Zane he would know better what the, what the discount would be than, than I would, so I'll let him and Andrew come up with it, so.
Especially, you know, when we have those outings, we have one hundred and forty-four golfers, if we can, yeah, so that's, that's a good, good idea. Anything else, golf?
Nope.
All right, moving on, police, chief, you got anything for us?
I do not.
All right.
I'd like to mention to the council, last year, we changed the ordinance on fireworks, and in the, we were going to revisit it, so in the event you want to revisit it, I just want to remind you, we would have to get it on the next.
Agenda.
Agenda, to try and get it changed for July. We changed it to July third from seven to eleven, July fourth to ten to eleven, clean up by nine in the morning the day after, with fines and whatnot, so I just wanted to mention that because, I don't know, I was thinking about Memorial Day, which made me think about Fourth of July, which made me think about fireworks.
And the Fourth is on a Wednesday, and we did, we did it last year because it fell on a, on a mid or beginning weekday.
Is that not suggesting anything different? I just wanted to...
You're, you're not going to sit back there, come on up.
I do have some, I've had some people talk to me about it, so I think we should just revisit it, and then next about hours, and what can be blown up and what can be done, so.
Just remember, I just put in the whole ordinance table.
Okay.
How was...
We should probably discuss this for next year.
We can discuss it for next year.
Hi, Chief.
Yeah, well, how did it go last year?
I, you know, I, it was similar to previous years, except now it was a little more legal. When, when we talked, yeah, when we, when we talked about it last year, I, I advocated for, for just the Fourth of July, instead of having two days, just to have one, and I would, I would still stand by that, and think that that's reasonable. You know, it's, it's, the reality is, is fireworks are going to be shut off, and this, this has been the standard ever since I became a police officer, some forty years ago. You can have the ordinances, people are going to, especially on the Fourth of July, there, it's going to be ignored. When I was with Sioux Falls, you know, we, we would have a number of complaints, more complaints than we had people that could get to them, and, and generally speaking, there were, there were no citations issued unless they were shooting bottle rockets at police cars, which did happen on occasion. So I guess if, if you did make a change, it would be for the third, is, is what, what I would think would be reasonable, just restrict it to one day, and, but that's up to you.
I'm sorry, I missed it, did you say you favored two days or one day?
One day.
I favored one day.
One day, okay.
And I, I think last year it was on Sunday, so...
No, it was a Monday.
It was Monday, so, yeah.
So they, they shot, a lot of them shot deep into the night on Sunday.
Yes.
Because most everybody has a day off on, on the Fourth, except for the great police officers.
Thank you.
But I think it would be worth revisiting, I've, I've had a comment made to me about why do we not allow them to be sold within the city limits and get that sales tax, so I don't know the answer to that question.
You know, I can tell you, we regulate it, because that way you don't have a firework stand going off and explode, a fire in a firework stand that does more damage to neighboring businesses than if they're in the outside of the city, so it's common for cities to do that, and not let it be right next to other businesses, so for the safety of the businesses and houses, that's why we've had that there. Doesn't mean you can't revisit it and allow them to be in the city limits, but that was the rationale years ago.
I think, yeah, because I think we should revisit that, and just, you know, talk, start talking about it, and if we can do it for this year, we'll do it for next year, so.
Okay, thanks, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
All right, moving on. Parking rec, we have the maintenance work report in front of us. We have a pay app number five, Aspen Park concession restroom.
Yes, Mayor, so Devin wasn't able to be here tonight, he did have a couple of things to report, if you've noticed, the flowerpots have been filled.
Yes.
And I know Joe's particularly happy, and you can see the flowers are ready, so that's good, so we're hoping that that will work this year, work a little bit better. We have a couple of hires, and he wanted you to know that the, the flooring and the pool has been done, we have a new epoxy floor. So if you haven't been able to get out to Aspen, you should really take a run out there, it's, that baseball facility is really looking sharp these days, so I would make a motion to do that pay app for the concession stand.
I'll make a second.
A motion from Fish, second from Hausmann, for pay app number eight, Aspen Park concessions and restrooms, questions or discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, and then we have some pool and maintenance staff, and we have some headguard.
I put a pool update in front of you, we're recommending Tyson Newton and Kiana Thielen be headguards for the summer of two thousand eighteen, and they would be moved to the hourly wage of twelve twenty-five, and then Nick Moller needs a wage change down to eleven oh five for the summer.
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
A motion from Fish, second from Wakefield, on the pool headguard, questions or discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, I don't think we talked about the staff, the seasonal staff, also, do we need to, probably shouldn't, yeah, probably need a motion for that also.
Yeah, I'll make a motion for that, Chief, second.
A motion from Fish, second Hausmann, to approve Dylan, I'm going to not say it correctly, Thee and Bryce Mixel for the seasonal park staff. Questions or discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
We just have the pool, it's set to open on Saturday, software's been up and running and seems to be working well online, swimming lessons is going well, we're getting some more each day, so that's working well, the computers are down at the pool, we're going to get those kind of finalized tomorrow, and we'll start training the staff on Wednesday.
And thank you for doing that online, too, I've had a lot of great, I mean, a lot of people tell me what a great experience they've had with signing up, so thank you for that initiative and doing that.
Yeah, the software is awesome, Christina, good, good win on that. Every resident I've talked to that's signed up has said it's two minutes, it's great, it's super fast, so a lot of people are excited to use it, so thank you again.
Yeah, and it should get easier next year as people get their key tags and they keep those every year, and so next year, it'll just be easier to buy both online and, and they'll be set.
Excellent. I cut down the, the lines and the pushing and shoving on the signup day.
You got to get good spots, right?
All right. Anything else, parking rec?
The grand opening for Field A will be June first, and that will, they'll be playing some games, it's in, it'll be in the evening, so I'm sure we'll have some publicity out on that.
Seven P.M.
Seven P.M., okay, all right, okay, all right, thanks.
All right, thank you. Item twelve, employee health insurance proposal. Casey, how are you doing, my friend?
I'm good.
He shows up once a year, you notice that?
No.
I see him more than once a year.
Maybe because of what we're doing, I have him higher on the list than...
Down farther, Casey.
Yeah, renewal time, um, I get, you know, not much else to say, I guess, but, you know, down seven and seven point three.
Yeah.
You know, I, I just did a little, I just kind of looked back, the last, I think I did eight years, is what I had handy, and our, our highest renewal was, was ten point eight five, and that was in two thousand sixteen. Other than that, they've all been single digits, with two years of negatives, twenty, twenty twelve was negative four point nine, and then obviously this year at, at seven point, seven three negative, so, you know, two, little over two point, two and a half percent average over those numbers, that's, in this market, we cannot, or I cannot complain with that, I mean, anybody can complain when the rates go up, but if we can historically stay at single digits, man, that's a win.
So that, so that risk level, Casey, so that, that's the big one?
That was the big...
So that is, what is that?
So, yeah, if you look at the following pages of the claims, I think that's on the next page, after the, you know, you had just about a two hundred thousand dollar drop in, in claims this year, yep. And, you know, some of that can be deceiving, we've talked about this over the years, these are, these are covered charges, they're incurred costs, so it's, it doesn't really take into account the, the discounts between the provider and, and the insurance company, so, you know, those are a little bit deceiving, but yet nonetheless, I mean, those are going to reflect when those rates, when they, when they change like that, and we've seen that over the years, if we get, if we have high numbers, you know, on that, on those claims, it, they ding us, and we had a good year this year on, on claims, and if you look through those, those, those lists of claims as well, claims more than ten thousand, that's going to tell you, you know, those are the same people, just from one year to the next, so you can see we had some that, you know, a lot of those claims that were larger aren't going on this year, so they're, maybe they're a one-time deal, which is great, you know, they're not, and they're not in a reoccurring condition on some of those, so, but that's the same person or people side by side, one year to the next, yeah.
Is there anything that we can be doing to actively try to bring these rates down, whether it's wellness programs or fitness, that kind of stuff, that we can really push harder or anything like that?
Well, I think the, I think the city implemented, how many years ago was that? That was, yeah, they implemented a wellness program here.
Yep, and then we have a safety program, too, that...
Yep, I mean, they, they all, those can't hurt, I don't know that there's enough research out there, that those, those are relatively new, to say what the exact effect is of them, but they, how can they hurt? You know, trying to get somebody to walk more, quit smoking, or whatever it is, so, but there is one in place here.
You like it?
Yes.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm, I'm also proud to kind of say that this is my, Larry's probably the only one that know, that it was here, but it was twenty years ago we started doing the, the insurance here, so that's, that's a nice milestone for us, and we appreciate it, and, so I just wanted to mention that, but...
Yes, thank you, Casey.
Thanks, Casey.
You bet, and if we can, this, you know, this, these are, this is supposed to change out in two thousand nineteen, at the end of two thousand nineteen, this is where we are supposed to get forced to the ACA-compliant plans at the end of two thousand nineteen. We will see what happens on that, 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 that has been kicked down, they've kicked that can down the road since two thousand fourteen, so...
What would that mean?
That would mean, that would, more than likely, that's going to mean a pretty good increase in rates, is what that's probably going to mean. Because of the added, there's, there's added benefits in there from the ACA that's mandated by the federal government, that's put in those plans, and it's, it, it does, it does reflect in the cost, so hopefully, we're in a grand, we're what they call a grandfathered plan, and we, we were, you know, I like to think it was our insight that kept us there, I think there's a lot of luck there, too, that we, that we were able to keep it there, but it's the best thing that's, it's the best thing that's happened to the city as far as our benefits have gone, is for us to be on this grandfathered plan, so hopefully they will continue to kick that down the can, or come the road, or eliminate it altogether.
Thanks a lot, again.
Thanks, Casey.
You bet. No.
You don't need anything, the renewal, we usually do the renewal the first meeting in June.
Yep.
This is just information only at this point in time.
All right, thanks. Resolution oh six eighteen, setting farmer's market application fee at a hundred dollars, and we're not going to charge each vendor, we're just going to have the person, the company or person that's putting on the farmer's market, and it's good for the whole year.
Yep.
Yeah, so I'll make a motion to approve Resolution oh six eighteen.
I'll second.
Motion from Hausmann, second from Wakefield, to approve Resolution oh six eighteen, setting the farmer's market application fee, questions or discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And then we have Resolution oh seven eighteen, which is declaring support for the adoption of the Lincoln County Mini-Haha County Pre-Disaster Hazard Mitigation Plan two thousand seventeen update. That is...
We do this every five years, and during that update, the team consisting of county representatives and city representatives take a look at numerous disasters that we think may occur in our area, and those include flooding, drought, hazardous materials, hail, nuclear incident, active shooter storms, both winter, spring, summer, tornadoes, landslides, flash flooding, urban fires, et cetera. And as part of that process, we rank the probability and also how likely it's going to... to happen to us, um, it's, it's a hundred and, I think it's a hundred and seventy page document, uh, it's on the CCOG website, I didn't feel like printing it off, cause, um, and then as part of that, we identify some projects in each community, um, that we will undertake over the next five years, uh, and we'll probably start this process again in about four.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution oh seven eighteen.
A motion from Hausman, second from Parsons to approve Resolution oh seven eighteen, Hazard Mitigation Plan. Questions or discussion?
When you say that we, um, decide to take on some projects, do we discuss that, or is that something that the police do, or...
No, it's, it could be a number of things, in the last plan, we identified the flood wall around the lift station at the golf course, um, the flooding down here at Aspen and Maine, um, I'm trying to think of what else was in there, uh, generators, and all of the, the booster stations and lift stations has been done in the past, so, we as a staff sit down and think, okay, what do we need? What critical infrastructure do we need to protect? You know, if remember, a while ago, we included the flood wall, uh, for those four houses, that was a two million dollar project, it's, um, a lot of, lot, fortunately, um, the utility companies also participate in this, so, East River, um, Alliance, Sioux Valley, they participate in it, and a lot of it's geared towards, uh, them, 'cause most of the impact on winter storms, seasonal, or summer storms, impact their providing service.
With that being said, I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, alright. Item D, council committee assignments. We brought this back on for discussion purposes?
Well, if, if we, if we did this, um, it would not mitigate the assignments that we have to our other committees, okay? But how are you going to decide who goes where on this?
Who wants to volunteer? We don't wanna draft anybody. We, we could draw names, um...
That's a possibility.
Certainly could.
Yeah.
You know, write down, you know, one, your one, two, and three.
How often do we meet, I mean, how, what's the game plan?
You know, it's really, it's really, um, as needed, um, you know, for instance, personnel would meet when, when we're doing a search, or when a vacancy occurs, uh, the Personnel Committee would review the job description, see if there's any updating, any recommendations, take part in the, in the interview process, uh, if you're available, um, we would encourage that, um, you know, pu, uh, the public improvements, capital improvements, projects, um, would kinda be an ongoing one, if we've got a project coming down the road, uh, like our, our Maine and, I can't remember what we call it, our Maine and Dogwood Sewer Interceptor Project, uh, as we go through that process, uh, be involved, as we go through, like the Rushmore, uh, sewer project, uh, we meet on a fairly regular basis, you wouldn't necessarily come to all those, we meet with engineering on that, but, uh, at least give you updates as to where we're at in the process, um, you know, finance, um, and legislative, legislative part would be reviewing ordinances, proposed ordinances, before, before, and then finance, uh, you know, we'd be looking at, we've talked about, if you remember, Dwight gave us some recommendations as to how to maybe reduce or eliminate our segregation of duties thing that we get on the audit, uh, the Finance Committee would probably meet after council meetings to do that monthly audit, if you wanted to.
Do you think this is something that we might wanna wait until we get an other council person?
Well, no, this, this would give the five of you the choice, the choice ones, and then pawn the, which the crappiest committee, or at least your opinion, the crappiest committee off on the new person.
We had their two each?
Uh, yep. So, no, you can certainly wait, uh, until the newest, the new person, we're still kind of on schedule at this point in time to do that on the fourth, um, what I'm thinking now, since, since the mayor's gonna be gone for the briefing meeting, uh, if the council can meet at five o'clock on the fourth, to go over the, or meet those applicants that have expressed interest currently, we have three, um, and then if you're comfortable, make that appointment at the meeting on the fourth, otherwise, you know, either special meeting between then and, or the next council meeting, which would be the eighteenth?
Eighteenth. Fourth is regular council meeting, fourth and eighteenth.
I think it's a good idea to, um, give these committee assignments a try, I think it gives everybody a broader scope of what's going on in the city, and, so...
Well, I just think, on the equipment side, I mean, it's a great opportunity to look at all the departments and understand if there's any equipment needs and shuffling that we can do, um, you know, I, I see what, what Chuck's getting at there, and, um, you know, on capital projects, if we can scoot some around between the departments, so, um, I think the finance and legislative might be number three, though. No takers.
Okay, I, I'm just thinking about it.
Yeah, I think, I think the, the longer term, the longer the term, the more priorities.
Let's give it a try.
Yeah, let's, let's think about it and let's come to a conclusion, okay? Yep, alright. Okay. Alright, however you wanna work it. Okay, thank you. Anything else, administration?
No, Mayor, now that I'm on the administration thing, no.
Okay. Alright, item thirteen, streets, we have the maintenance report, um, on Thursday, we're told that the hot patch in the asphalt is flowing in Brandon like you would not believe.
I, I was sorta curious about the cell phone and the sewer, Raleigh, did you find it?
Yes.
How did you do that?
Was it yours?
No, um, lady, the prophet, the day of the bridge.
And it went right down in there and... Hopefully you sent my nephew down through there, he's the smallest one of you guys.
That's direct service.
Applaud you guys, wow, that's great.
Alright, um, we have an agreement with the DOT for sidewalk and handicap pedestrian ramps on Highway eleven, and we talked about this Thursday, it's, we're going down and around to connect that, to Aspen, right?
Correct, that's part of the project.
But then they're gonna do all of them, going all the way down.
Correct, DOT had planned a project for a couple of years now, I'm looking at Paul 'cause he was dealing with it, um, to replace the pad ramps on Split Rock, to meet new ADA requirements, and that's been in their works for a while, the park committee has been working to get a trail connection or sidewalk connection from Aspen to the high school, Cedar. So we've been working on that for a while, we'd applied for, we're in the process of applying for grant to do that, when DOT said, hey, we got a deal for you, um, and they would do that project as part of their ADA ramp project, uh, if you saw, there's a bunch of stakes on Aspen, where they're, where they're doing the survey work for that, um, so this is an agreement that, that allows us to participate with the DOT on that project.
Now, I had a concern Thursday, and my concern was, hopefully, they are not as foolish, for lack of a better word, as they put the ramps in on Sioux and had the kids riding their bike shoot out into the road, and then try to weave back in along the road and then back onto the sidewalk, for these ramps.
We can, we can check, we, we haven't seen the, we haven't seen the plans yet for, at least I haven't seen the plans yet for their ADA ramp project.
Um, so, this, Hartboard is tremendously happy about this project, because this was gonna cost, I don't remember, but it was gonna be pretty expensive.
Two hundred thousand.
Two hundred thousand?
Yeah, 'cause we're making an eight-foot sidewalk.
Yeah, that's just money that we can put someplace else, and we think it's very important 'cause that curve, I think that curve is dangerous.
Yeah, I do too.
I will make the motion.
And I will second that motion.
I have a motion from Fish, second from Hausman, to approve the agreement with the South Dakota Department of Transportation for sidewalk and handicap pedestrian ramps on Highway eleven, um, I wish we could say that made sense, but I won't go any further on that. So they don't go out into the middle of the street? Okay. Any other discussion, other than my bandwagon? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, alright.
Is there any estimate on the cost of that?
It's still at around two hundred thousand.
But then, if they go, keep going down...
But that's, that's just for the sidewalk portion, we don't, since we're not really involved with pad ramps, we don't know what that cost is, that's a state project.
Alright, wow, that's amazing. Okay. We got a bid opening for Redwood Boulevard Storm Sewer Project, and that's on page one oh one, we can see the...
I can talk to this, I, uh, met with Raleigh and Stockwell Engineering to talk through this project, uh, it's one of the areas where residents notice the, the water the most on heavy rain events, basically what we're doing is extending the storm sewer down to hit, uh, what you see in the blue box, that gets you to Ninth Avenue, and then in the future, we'll have other phases that'll push it back into, to Maywood Street, uh, good project for us, it's, uh, in our capital improvement projects list, um, so, right now, Stockwell's in the process of designing it, Mitch, maybe you can give a quick update on that?
Yeah, we're, we're just finishing up the plans, we'll have them ready this week for staff to review, uh, so we'll send them to them, give them the chance to make some comments on it, and then we'll turn around and make changes and have the plans ready probably next week sometime, um, so tonight, we're actually looking for a, a motion to advertise a project for bid, so...
And the thought here was, uh, instead of waiting until next meeting, uh, we could go ahead and release it, uh, preliminary discussions on this went very well at Stockwell, so, with that, I'll make a motion to allow Stockwell to release this to bid, uh, which would be the Redwood Boulevard Storm Sewer Project.
Motion from Wakefield, second by Hausman, to allow Stockwells to go ahead and get a advertise for bids on the Redwood Boulevard Storm Sewer Project. Questions or discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. How about anything else, streets?
I will say no.
Okay, I was trying to get Raleigh's attention, but he, he's hiding behind that, that pillar, he's really... Water and sewer, water source development agreement with AE two S.
You must be with AE two S.
Push the purple button, sir, thank you.
Good evening, Richard Wagner, AE two S, um, over the last couple of weeks, we've been working with, uh, Mr. Reed and Lisa Marzo on, uh, an agreement for completing the water evaluation study, um, we have, uh, presented a, a draft copy to, um, to the City of Brandon, and we've gone through a few, uh, revisions, and, and we've continued that, uh, today as well, and believe you guys, I don't know which version you guys have, you might have the original version.
On your, in your packets, there's a PDF of just AE two S two, that is a clean copy of, revised, so that, that's the final one that Brian and I have looked at, that, um...
Alright, thank you for that.
So are we discussing it, or is there some other information you'd like to...
Well, in fairness, Mr. Wagner, he was driving down as Brian and I were finishing up the final changes, so I don't know that he's able to commit to that version, or if you wanna approve it, and then he needs to take it back, so I'm not sure where...
I'd like to make a comment on one item, did we get that item changed, that I had talked to you about?
Yeah, I, I did put the federal rate in line with you, so that's in the clean version.
Okay, so they had, um, this is just kind of a burr under my saddle, I always check this, on transportation costs, um, sixty-five cents a mile, and the IRS rate is fifty-four and a half cents, so I ask that we got that changed, so, if we could, so...
Thank you.
Thank you for being diligent.
So, how, yeah...
I, I guess I would be fine if you guys, um, approved it, and, you know, I, I think the changes that, uh, Ms. Marzo made, and along with Mr. Reed, I think those would likely be, um, fine with AE two S, but I, ultimately, I can't make that call for AE two S, but, uh...
But then we can get started.
But then, and that's, that's the whole idea, is that we wanna get started as soon as possible, so that we can get, uh, get the ball rolling on this, the, you know, the, the information that's been changing is more of a contractual, you know, the, the, it's the, it's significant, but the heart of it is going to be the, the actual scope of the project, and that's, and that has not changed, the actual work that we're gonna be doing.
Okay.
With that, I will make a motion that the clean version that Lisa completed, uh, Ms. Marshall completed today, uh, would be approved by the Brandon City Council.
A motion from Wakefield, second from Parsons, to go ahead and approve the water source development agreement with AE two S, and with the, probably the, um, that he will take it and review it and get back with any changes, okay? Any other questions? Thank you for coming down.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Alright, with that being said, I have a motion and a second, any, um, with that being said, I have a motion and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, alright. Resolution oh five eighteen, water restrictions and violations.
This establishes our green, yellow, red designations, uh, with lawn watering restrictions, as well as the surcharge for those violations.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution oh five eighteen.
Does it just say grass in there? I, I'm trying to find it.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, regular watering of yards and grass hereby established, thank you very much for, for making that change. Did I give a second with that? Okay, I have a motion from Hausman, second from Parsons, to approve Resolution oh five eighteen, questions or discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Alright, got a report there, Mr. Wakefield, for us, sir?
I do, uh, Water Development Committee, uh, meet, meet it, uh, met this, uh, last week, and, uh, it was a very good meeting, we actually got out of here by seven PM, it was the first, uh, nice and short meeting, uh, at the meeting, uh, we discussed, uh, the RFP process and that AE two S was selected, um, we also had, uh, quite a wonderful discussion from, uh, Patrick Deering and the Water Conservation Subcommittee, uh, there's going to be a few residents here in Brandon, including myself and Trudy, who are going to be, uh, testing and trialing a new water sprinkler system that will, uh, base it more on weather than just a simple rain sensor, uh, we're very excited to try that, and then, uh, help others understand, uh, what the implications are of that system, and also, uh, just really dive into, to what water conservation is and how to set those, uh, those rain systems. One thing that was discussed, uh, quite extensively was, with an odd even, really, you still only need two days of, of watering, uh, and that should be about half an inch each day, and if you think about it, and, and it's kind of an interesting, uh, concept, but, if you set up your rain system to water specifically only on Mondays, Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays, even with an odd even, you still only get two days of watering, and, uh, when you start thinking about what that does, uh, to your lawn, it, it's gonna help establish that deeper roots and, and really change, uh, how long your lawn will survive, uh, the other topic that, uh, was kind of interesting to hear is the differences between sod and a hydroseed, and completely caught me off guard, I would've never guessed, but... a hydroseed. And completely caught me off guard, I would have never guessed, but hydroseed takes 80% less water than sod does to establish. So, uh, in the future, I'd, uh, really like to see, uh, more residents go towards hydroseed, uh, because of that. I know that it's great to have sod and have that plush lawn, but, uh, the water savings are very, very substantial. And, uh, even, uh, in my neighborhood, you can see, especially when it starts to dry out in July and August, you can see those that seeded versus sodded. It, it really changes quick. So, uh, just a few things there. Um, and then from, uh, here on, we're going to meet as a Water Development Committee, uh, once a month, and the Subcommittee will continue to meet, uh, every other week. And, uh, with that, we're going to co-locate the times so that we meet on the same day on that once a month. So that should help, uh, keep, uh, keep us digging into the saddle and, and getting things accomplished in a little quicker fashion. So those dates will be on the city website. Uh, right now, we had planned on June 5th. That day is going to change to the 6th because of election conflict. And then July 10th and August 7th are the dates. Again, that'll be at 6:00 PM here in council chambers, so.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, also, most agronomists say if you let your grass go taller, your roots go deeper. So those of you that got your lawn mower set at one and two, pump it up a little. All right. Um, update, Rushmore Sewer in Redwood?
Uh, same time that we met with, uh, Stockwell to discuss the, uh, storm sewer project that we approved just earlier. Uh, we talked about the Rushmore Sewer Project, and, uh, Raleigh and I had an opportunity to review those plans, uh, at Stockwell's office. Uh, you want to go ahead and give a quick update, Mitch?
Uh, yeah, we have the plans advertised right now on our website, and that bids next Wednesday. So we'll open bids at that time, um, go through the bids at the next couple of days, and then have that ready to present to you folks at your next meeting for a recommendation to award to a contractor. Um, I was just on our website now, and it looks like we've got about six plan holders, prime contractors, that are looking to bid it. So it's good. We've gotten some good interest so far.
Excellent. Excellent.
So, bids are next Wednesday? Is that two days from now, or?
Uh, next week, Wednesday.
Thank you. Thank you. Anything else, Water Sewer?
No, I think, uh, it's great, sir.
I think so. Um, one thing that came about Thursday for other business that may come before council, Mr. Brown asked if he could be an item on the, for an engineer report, just, you know, if I've, he says it's hidden in the back of the packet, and sometimes we don't get all the way to the back of the packet to look at his report. So he would like, you know, like, item number 15 be engineer report type thing?
Good.
Okay. Any other business before council?
All right. Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion from Hausmann, second from Wakefield for adjournment. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.